Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
Councilmember Sterns?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wagner?
Here.
Councilmember Stackler?
Here.
Councilmember Instrom?
Here.
Mayor Mortar?
I'm here, thank you. And we need a public comment sheet, my friend. So the first thing on our agenda, for those of you who may not be familiar with our process, is public comment. So we invite comments from any of you who are here, who would like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda at this point, thank you very much. And we invite you to speak for three minutes. Please share your first and last name at the outset. And if you have something to comment that is on the agenda, then we ask you to wait until we get to that point in our evening's agenda tonight. So I have two names on the agenda, or on the public comment period, and I'll ask you to come up first, and then if you have another comment, please feel free to let us know after that. Evelyn Callis, please come on up.
I'm Evelyn Callis, from the board of the Friends of the Library. And I want to present to the council the letter that the Friends of the Library has forwarded to all of the members of the council, so that the content of this letter can be on the public record. This arose from our review of the preliminary plans submitted by Mount Shasta Engineering for the expansion of the library. At two meetings in September, we carefully reviewed these plans. The consensus of those meetings was that these plans are not acceptable for these reasons. First, the size of the building. The expansion outlined is approximately 6,000 square feet. The designs prepared after full consideration by our building and design committees were a maximum of 4,800 square feet. The increase in construction and operational costs related to an excess 1,200 square feet would be significant. Secondly, the shape. The footprint drawn presents an unusual and unattractive shape, including a narrow, east-facing, three-sided courtyard that adds limited function and would engender increased maintenance costs. The exterior renderings show complicated and obtrusive roof designs, which with the angular geometry of the footprint, would seriously increase the cost of construction. Under staffing and surveillance, the floor plans as submitted completely remove the children's area from oversight by the desk staff. This poses an unacceptable risk to our children's safety, and an additional staff person with this area would be necessary. The functions of the interior spaces of this building should be established before the footprint is final. And finally, aesthetics. The previous community input reviews have stressed views of the surroundings and natural light through windows. Blending of the expansion with the existing building has been emphasized. The renderings submitted of the proposed building failed to provide these. We are convinced that an expansion of our building can be designed that provides the size, affordability, function, and appearance that's appropriate for our community. We are deeply disappointed that our committee's designs, validated by library and community input, have not been recognized and incorporated into these plans. I would add that at a subsequent meeting on October 4th, the Library Tax Advisory Committee came to the same conclusions and has submitted to you a more elaborate and extensive letter detailing the same ideas and conclusions.
Thank you, Evelyn. I'm sorry, you're out of time. I will acknowledge receipt of your letter. Thank you for so carefully crafting it. And perhaps Bruce, in his comments, can speak to the meetings and the process he has in mind from here on. Thank you.
I would ask that a copy of the letter be provided to all the council members.
A copy of the letter was, it had your names across the top of the letter. It didn't come, did each of you get a copy of the letter that Evelyn just read? In your hard mail? It was in your hard mail? No? Well, that's where I got mine, so I assumed everyone...
If that's not the case, I'll make sure each of you do receive a copy, because I have the original.
Yeah, our apologies if it didn't go to you. I believe you read verbatim from it tonight, Evelyn. Yes? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Kyle. Commander, Kyle?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Kyle Foster. I'm the Lieutenant Commander for Mount Shasta CHP. This evening, I just wanted to come before you and tell you that now that the Delta Fire has been resolved, the CHP will be engaging in an after-action report. Typically, we don't reach out to the public for comment on this. It's an internal document to review our own best practices. But I did want to afford the opportunity to the city and to your respective agencies within the city, to see if there's anything constructive feedback-wise that we could receive from you that would benefit us in future emergencies or other large-scale incidents. I want to say thank you to the city and all of your employees during the Delta Fire. We had nothing but positive working relationships and great feedback. Same thing with Dunsmere and all the other surrounding communities. And it was a very beneficial experience for us. Again, we had no negative interactions or anything else. It was a very scary event. We got through it, and we're ready for the next one, should there be another one. But again, on our part, if there's anything we can do better next time, please let me or my staff know. We'll incorporate it into our own internal document, and that way, we're prepared for the next time.
How would you like to receive that feedback?
You can send it to me directly via email, or people can feel free to send us letters in the mail. And if there's anything, and just the only thing I ask is remember what's under our specific purview, so if it actually roadways, do they either fall under county roads or Caltrans? You know, we're more enforcement side and evacuation side. But if we do receive anything that has to do with roadways or traffic control or anything else, we'll refer back to the respective agency with jurisdiction to. All right.
Thank you. And will we have the opportunity to learn about the lessons learned from you?
Yes, absolutely.
When you're finished?
Absolutely.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Other public comments, please?
Madam Mayor, there was a letter that was sent via email from Gloria Cooper. It largely paraphrases the letter that Evelyn Callis just read. But Gloria indicates, "I will be unable to attend the meeting tonight, but wanted to share my disappointment with the proposed library expansion plans. There are many reasons why the preliminary plans for the library expansion submitted by Mount Shasta Engineering are unacceptable. I will name two. First, the size doesn't fit the specifications given to Mount Shasta Engineering. The original intent of the expansion was to increase space for community programs and programs after library hours. Increasing the size, for some unknown reason beyond what was specified, increases construction and operational costs significantly. Second, the design doesn't fit the given parameters. The unusual shape is aesthetic, I think that means aesthetically unattractive, in relationship to the surrounding natural environment. Unfortunately, Mount Shasta Engineering excluded the design considerations that took years of community input from the Friends of the Library and the on-site executive director. The inter-library functions that are appropriate and serves our community have not been honored or recognized in these plans. The Friends of the Library are committed to supporting and developing an expansion that serves our community six hours a day, six days a week. I do not approve the proposed plans for Mount Shasta Engineering."
Okay, thank you. Yes, we did receive that letter. Thank you. Okay, other comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none, then, I'd like to move on in our agenda to council and staff comments. Bruce, would you like to begin?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Mortar, members of the council. So basically, my comments tonight will be relatively brief, and will focus initially on the trip I took to the International Conference on Shopping Centers Convention in Los Angeles last week. I think it was a basically worthwhile trip. We made some good contacts with business operations that could be, at some time in the future, locate here in Mount Shasta. We worked at some major development corporations, looking at the possibility of companies here coming here to work as master developers on the landing. Basically, the response, it was interesting in that most of the major development companies' attitude was, first, our plate's really full with projects we're already doing, and we're not looking for new projects. And secondly, now, Siskiyou County and Mount Shasta, with a smaller population, lower income, are not in our marketing target area. They said, since we are the owner, we, the city, are the owner of the property, suggested we try to work as our own master developer, find end-users, divide out small parcels that develop the property on that basis, and work more with local contractors and builders than trying to attract a master developer. So there's a lot of interest from franchises. Of course, you have to have a franchisee to go along with that. So this is some of the issues we'll have to be looking at. But overall, it was a positive convention in that the economy is moving forward quite rapidly in most areas of California and the country. There's a great deal of development taking place. It's just unfortunately not a lot taking place here at this time. So we will have to keep focusing and pushing forward on our infrastructure programs and land divisions to make this happen. With respect to the library, and I'm glad that Evelyn brought that up, because I have met with Evelyn, I have received her letter, I have met with Dennis Johnson, Representative LTAC, with Courtney Laverty, our librarian, and with Mount Shasta Engineering. There is a strong disagreement on where we are at the 30 percent drawings. The reason we broke this into phases, like 30 percent, is we didn't want to produce complete building plans for a building, and then go, oh, that's not what we wanted, and have to go back and redo everything. So that's why we break it into phases. We come up with concepts. We start to lay out the plans. Courtney's had numerous meetings with the design team on the interior of the operation of the library, the layout of the library, and how things are to function. One of the issues that has been brought up is the question of the children's area. And Courtney was quite adamant that the design, as presently envisioned, while it relied on cameras, sensing devices, and alarms to provide protection for children, that in this day and age, that wasn't adequate. We needed to have visual, hands-on control over that area. So she's made that recommendation to the consultants, and they're making those, incorporating those changes. When you incorporate one change, you of course affect other parts. So I have a meeting tomorrow morning with Courtney. We're going over Courtney's concerns, the Friends of the Library, and LTAC, and formally what we will take forth to the consultant, what design changes we would recommend. And this, from my way of thinking, this is a library, and it has got to function as a library. And Courtney's the librarian that's going to run this. So we've got to make sure that the plans we come up with and what we build will work for Courtney. There is some disagreement here about some of the spatial layout, in particular, the meeting rooms. There are some meeting rooms that were designed into this. That was based on some of the input, I believe, from the city council. They thought a multipurpose-type meeting rooms would be good, to be included in our library. I believe LTAC would prefer they be reading rooms and not public meeting rooms. So those are the type of considerations we have to take into effect. If you make, if you go from a public meeting room to a reading room, you reduce the size of the room. But you also reduce what functions that room can be used for. So there are trade-offs, and so we'll be working in those. There's been a lot of question from LTAC of why they aren't getting more public input. As I have reminded, LTAC, the original contract that the staff came up with and that Mount Shasta Engineering had agreed to, had had a public outreach component in the budget. And at the request of LTAC, that was taken out, because they felt they had provided all the public input that was necessary. And now we're kind of getting, well, yeah, but we'd like some input. So one of the options we can consider is bringing it back to council, adding that money back into the budget. So those are the issues we'll be working on, coming up with alternatives, and figuring out where we go from here. But we need to get some closure on this, decide if we're going with the drawings we have, or modifying them, what we're going to do with the project, because we're going to fall seriously behind on the project if we don't start moving it. That would conclude my comments for the evening.
Thank you, Bruce. Questions of Bruce?
So Bruce, my impression is, from certain quarters with respect to the library, they may not be too upset about falling behind. That's the impression I get. If it means that there's going to be a forcing of the issue and come out with a product or a building design that really doesn't achieve the goals that the Friends of the Library and LTAC groups were aiming for, so I guess my point is rushing forward just for the sake of making some goal occur at a certain time. I don't think people that are involved with the library want to do that in lieu of getting the right design. So maybe taking some more time would be good. Maybe taking some more time would be good. Evelyn?
So that's a council comment. John, have you any questions of Bruce?
Well, yeah, the question is, did you get the same impression? Or do you think that the library people want to rush into this also?
No, I think it's important to get it right, and that may mean you have to spend a little more money, or you may need to take a little more time. The trade-off is you just race forward just for an arbitrary deadline, and you don't get the project that you want. That would be, in my opinion, foolish. The other thing you have to keep in mind here, we have the Friends of the Library that have put so many years into this library. It's why you have a library today, is because of the Friends of the Library. LTAC has put a lot of work in. In the end, you have to remember that this is a city project. It is a city building, and it will be bid out and built by the city. So staff is trying to balance the needs of the Friends, needs of LTAC, Courtney, and still meet the demands of the council. So if we come out of these meetings and say, look, you have the impression it needs to take more time, then the appropriate method of bringing it to council is say, in the staff's opinion, we need to spend more time on this, and it's better to take the time now and let the schedule slide, but give you the council to formally make that decision. Same as if we decided we came back and said, we've got to reopen this public process. We've got to get this comment, this input, going again, and we're going to recommend a budget change. That would have to come to council. So all these things could be considered, but eventually, if we're going to change the schedule, we're going to change the budget, it's got to be changed by the city council. LTAC and the Friends, as the rest of the community can make comments, share their opinions, but in the end, it's the city's decision.
Through the chair. Recognizing that the contractor bid on the project presumably based upon a certain timeline in terms of build, got his team together, and that there is strong disagreement as to the library layout or plans based upon a 30 percent build. Frankly, I remember seeing the original plans that LTAC came up with. I don't think I've seen the plans that the contractor came up with. I understand those contracts, those plans are likely to be changed anyway as a result of meeting with Courtney, as you indicated earlier. Wouldn't it be possible to, once there is a new draft, post-Kourtney contractor meeting, make those available to council and the community, and provide the opportunity for further public comment? We don't necessarily have to be adding thousands of dollars for public comment if we at least allow some public comment here at the council level. I would be interested, as much as anyone, I think, in seeing what the next iteration of a design would look like.
Point of clarification, we have been posting all of the materials that Nick has been sending us on a webpage that the city manager and council requested at the beginning of this. I've been waiting to put the 30 percent drawings up, because we hadn't confirmed, you know, any sort of what was going to happen with that. So we have been doing that already, and it's open to the public. And I believe we did do a press release at the beginning of it as well. But we have been doing that. The other thing to note, too, is that we're about four to six weeks behind schedule right now. So we've been taking a little bit more time. But we can, again, promote the page, but we've been providing all of those materials.
I'm trying to find a way that allows us to move forward, and...
The next step in the process is for Courtney and I to meet and go through Courtney's comments, since she's reduced to writing, and lay those out of what we, the client, the city is the client here, deems to be appropriate, changes the drawings, get those comments in writing to the consultant, Mount Shasta Engineering, and then hold a meeting with Mount Shasta, say, so, you know, if we do A, B, and C, what does that do to the footprint? What does it do to the layout? What does it, how does it affect heating and ventilation? And work these issues out, and then we bid it. At that point, we might have a different plan that we could do something with. Or we may come to logger's heads, that we're going to step back and find another resolution.
I'm suggesting that after that occurs, that perhaps, while the plans may be on the city website, frankly, I wasn't knowledgeable enough or cognizant enough to tune into that. So perhaps it could be circulated amongst council members, and obviously Friends, and LTAC, and community members. And again, it would provide another opportunity for public comment at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. And this, so we've moved into council comments now. Are there any other questions before we continue with council comments?
So Bruce, do you want to elaborate a little bit more? If we went back and revisited this public input part of the contract that we ended up voting out, if we voted that part back in, what would that look like? And is that, when you're talking about public input, I heard you mention LTAC, the Friends, Courtney, and the council. And I'm still interested, if we do go to public input, that the community is also involved in that. So what would that look like if we put that back into the contract?
Well, if we, depending on what the council decides, but if we put that back in, and we would have, we'd be paying Mount Shasta to hold public meetings, which would include the Friends...
Mount Shasta Engineering.
I'm sorry?
Mount Shasta Engineering.
Yes.
Yes, you just said Mount Shasta.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Yes, Mount Shasta Engineering. To hold a series of public meetings on the drawings that they would have at that time, and take input from the general public, from the Friends, from LTAC, we could get comments from the planning commission, the council. We'd open this thing back up and get, make a complete public process. There's been some, I think, misunderstanding. Some people said to me that the public comment was for general public, that process, but did not include LTAC. LTAC would have complete involvement throughout this, because they're basically functioning as staff, and that's simply not the case. They are the public. So if we want LTAC and Friends and other, the entire community be involved in this, you're going to have to pay the consultant's time to do that.
Other questions of Bruce?
From my perspective, would it not be possible for LTAC and Friends to give their input after the plans are redesigned based upon Courtney's input? She's indicated that, as we've heard tonight, that the children's area needs line of sight. So that's going to create some changes in the plans. Once things get moved around, it seems natural to me, I would think, that staff would be able to meet with Friends and LTAC, hopefully without delay, because timetable is important and get additional feedback.
We have presented these plans to LTAC and the Friends. They held their formal meetings, and they put their writing, their comments in writing submitted to us, which was very helpful. Now, if we make other changes, of course, they should be able to see that. But what we're trying to do is not end up in an endless process of meetings, where we're asked the consultant to do meeting after meeting after meeting, being questioned about everything, that is not being paid for.
I understand that. I wasn't, I think there's some way forward, though.
There's a balance in, yes.
I'm ready for other public comment.
Okay, I want to offer my comment on this subject before you move to that. I'd like to offer that I have, upon hearing immediately of the concerns last month, I met with Courtney out on the ground, and she went over the plans, we went over the staked ground. She told me her concerns, based on the input she had been receiving from mostly LTAC and Friends, I think maybe solely. And so I've been aware of that. I've talked with Courtney, and then I talked with Bruce about it. And I, what I understand is that we, in terms of clarifying roles here, Courtney is our librarian. She's very well-equipped to mediate between the concerns being expressed by the Friends and LTAC, and the design, the preliminary design that the engineers put forth. She sees it as her job to clarify the issues, to understand the alternative, to understand why Mount Shasta Engineering came in with alternative design from what was initially submitted. She is moving forward with that process of working with city manager, and then Mount Shasta Engineering, and then based on the degree of difference, then they can decide among them, that they'll have Mount Shasta Engineering do a different design. This is all in... This is all in the staff arena. All of this is in the staff arena. Those are the professionals. We don't know engineering, and we don't know library science. They do. And I trust that with the process that's laid out, they'll continue to work with it as professionals. If there isn't a solid sense in the librarian that we have a design that is acceptable, then we may need to bring it back to, and approve more money to do a full public involvement process, which would include the LTAC and the Friends' input, but it would also be open to the community. I think, again, that this has, just to repeat Bruce's point, I think we have all done ourselves a disservice by the city not having taken a more of a leadership role in this earlier. The vacuum was picked up by LTAC and Friends, and now the degree of ownership by you folks is so big that the city's having a hard time saying, "We need to manage this. We're ultimately responsible for this. We want to listen to you. You have saved our bacon over the years. You are, you know what you're talking about to some degree, certainly more than many of us, but we have a librarian who's in a position to listen to you and to work with Mount Shasta Engineering, and I think we should trust that process until we, until we need to intervene again." That's the process that we had set up, albeit that we're a little bit behind, but it is the process we agreed to earlier, and those are my comments. I think the roles have gotten a bit muddied, and I think we've hurt some feelings, and I'm sorry for that. And it may be a little rocky as we sort all of this out, but we're going to end up with a better library. We may not end up with it quite as quickly as we wanted, and we do need to be sensitive to our contracting engineering firms' need to move ahead with his schedule and the other projects that he's got lined out. But I just want to ask everybody for patience and commitment to a better library. This is going to be a good thing. A community such as ours, the library is a critical community gathering place. And if I may, I'd like to add that I was excited about the original design that had for small meeting rooms in there, because we have no meeting rooms in this town. Again and again, people are looking for someplace where they can gather with 25 people, and we just don't have them. So I would just ask for, Courtney and Bruce, you could pass the message on from me, certainly, that we think of the library as a community gathering place so that people can meet there, because we have no other place. Okay, thank you.
I think one other statement I'd like to make, that just so everybody's clear on this, we have questions about what to do, how to do it, and the consequences of making changes. What, quite fortunately, what we are not faced with is a consulting firm that is not cooperative. Mount Shasta Engineering has said repeatedly, "Tell us what you want here." He said to myself, he said it to Courtney, "If we need to change something, tell us what we need to change. We will tell you the consequences from an engineering, design, and a cost standpoint. And if that's what you want, and that's what you want us to do, we'll design it for you." So we have a cooperative process going, so that's a very good thing.
Thank you. Before we come back to you, Tim, Paul or John, any other comments?
Yeah, I just have a question to Bruce. Did we have a date for completion of this design work? Hope for completion date, or was it just sort of nebulous?
I believe ragweed is really terrible, but we had a completion date of, I believe, March or April of 2019, and we will not make that date.
That's for design?
That's for the complete engineering product to you and Planning Commission, as well as final environmental documentation.
Okay, so March of 2019?
So we will not meet that date at this point.
Did you say as well as the environmental document?
I'm working, so basically, Tuli is, has been contracted, is a subcontractor with Mount Shasta Engineering. She will not produce final environmental documentation. I will have to do that. So that will have to be in cooperation, which that's what we've been doing. So that's been my role in this whole project, is to complement what Tuli's doing, because we wanted to reduce the cost. So we'll be filing an initial study and declaration, whether it be mitigated or negative, with the files to Planning Commission. Hopefully, like I said, we're behind now, so it'll probably be more April, May, ideally.
Thank you. Back to you, Tim.
On a totally different matter.
Was there any other staff comment?
Stage has free ride days, three free ride days coming up. First one, November 9th, 2018, next, March 29, 2019, and after that, June 21st, 2019. Ride anywhere Stage travels for free on those three days. More information is available at co.siscu.ca.us, or calling the Stage office at 842-8220.
What was the first date?
November 9th.
November 9th. We should have a party on the bus.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions of other staff or comments by staff? Okay.
Yeah. Tomorrow night, there's going to be a Parks and Rec board meeting here in this room at 6:00 PM to talk about Measure P, if you have questions.
Thank you.
So that board meeting actually will have other critical items also regarding the Rec district. So if you're interested in what is a transformative situation for the Rec district, I do suggest you come to that meeting and maybe sit through the whole thing.
I'm going to move now, then, to the consent agenda. City manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added hereto shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes, October 8th, 2018, regular city council meeting. B, acceptance of Brown Act Committee minutes, Library Tax Advisory Committee, April 26th and May 18th, 2018, and Beautification Committee minutes, September 12th, 2018. C, approval of dispersments, accounts payable 1017, 2018, total gross payroll and taxes for the period ending 9/23, 2018. D, a monthly financial and investment report. E, authorization to extend the request for proposal for a franchise agreement to provide solid waste services. And F, approval of Unexpected Bears mural project.
Madam Mayor, I have a, hopefully a brief question regarding the beautification minutes. On page 11 of our agenda, beautification indicates that Beautification Committee asked about reviving Natural Spring on Castle Creek. This is something that has been in the community action plan since 1999. It's been approved and reapproved by the city council. Since then, it got a fair amount of positive attention at DAC's Rethinking Downtown. My concern is, in the same sentence that, or the next sentence, where it says Beautification asked about reviving Natural Spring on Castle Creek, the minutes say, "But this would require a massive downtown reworking, period, not feasible." Where did the "not feasible" come in, since it has a fair amount of community support?
And I had the same concerns, but thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah.
Is there someone here who can respond to that, or shall we go back to Lori Saunders, the chair, and ask for clarification?
So I was at the meeting, I'm the staff liaison for Beautification Committee, and I was actually at this one, I was not at the last, but as far as the discussion, it, these, Beautification Committee has been doing walking audits of parts of the downtown to observe possible beautification project recommendations to council, as well as the Downtown Enhancement Committee, as some of the options. The, I believe it's called daylighting of Castle Creek under the Parker Plaza, or, sorry, not Parker Plaza, Castle Street parking lot was brought up by a member of the public that was at the meeting, and Beautification asked what it would take to do that, and I outlined some of the costs and assessments that would have to do. And I believe that the "not feasible" is just in reference to, they considered it not feasible at this time for them. So that's their, that's just their discussion as far as DAC wanting to do that. Castle Street parking lot is under DAC jurisdiction, and so these are just discussions. So they looked at, they were just talking about the overall possible financial investment and what processes they'd have to go into to do it, and so Beautification felt it was not feasible for them to take on a project like that.
Perhaps, perhaps staff could provide whatever the estimates were. I know I have talked with Ken Kellogg, who was formerly the city engineer, and he indicated that it would be technically a fairly easy project to do. That doesn't mean inexpensive necessarily, but I would be interested if we have any further information as to cost.
So, again, we did not have a request for quote. It was just brought up by a member of the public and addressed peripherally in that committee. And again, that would not necessarily be under Beautification to make that recommendation.
Well, it sounds like it would be extra work on the part of staff to get that together. They would have to create it, so I wonder if you'd be comfortable just letting that go, and if it becomes a DAC priority, then we can ask for the staff to outline a cost for the project.
Yes, I think Juliana's explanation that Beautification Committee apparently decided it wasn't feasible for Beautification Committee to take on as a project at this point, clarifies the minutes, and perhaps, I would ask that the draft minutes actually include that clarification, where it says, "Just not feasible," that it wasn't feasible for Beautification Committee to take on as a project at this time.
Yeah, you could just say "not feasible at this time." Again, it was brought up by a member of the public, and it was just peripheral, and there, yeah.
Okay, so will you take that message back to them and ask them to revise the minutes?
I think you're the ones who would revise the minutes before approving, no? Just, okay. Yeah, I can just request that they make that clarification, but again, it was just a peripheral conversation.
Okay, thank you.
So, question, does that mean that we're removing the minutes from the, okay, consent agenda?
So B would be the LTAC committee meeting minutes of April 26th and May 18th only?
Move approval of consent agenda, items A through F, with the exclusion of the Library Tax Advisory Committee. I'm sorry, yes, Beautification Committee, thank you.
Is there a second?
Reading the wrong lines.
Are we clear, just the...
Yes.
Beautification Committee report, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, unanimous approval, thank you. Okay, let's move now to selection of Energy Services Company. Bruce Pope, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Morder. City staff specifically requests the city council approve the attached resolution selecting Johnson Controls, Inc. as a successful consultant for the self-financed design-build photovoltaic energy efficiency renewable energy operation project. On August 13th, the city council authorized circulation of a request for proposals from qualified consulting firms for this project. We advertised the project, we received two proposals. The proposed project would, the intent was to remove city hall facilities from electrical grid and place on city-owned controlled photovoltaic electric systems. These facilities would be the city wastewater treatment plant, city police and fire station buildings, city hall, and the city library, and also envisioned the feasibility study of the city-owned property known as the Orchard as being a photovoltaic farm to provide electrical energy for the city and surrounding properties. The two companies responded, it was Indoor Environmental Services and Johnson Controls. City staff with assistance of electrical engineer, electronic engineer from Pace Engineering with experience in photovoltaic systems and similar projects, reviewed both proposals, ranked them based on their completeness and thoroughness relative to the criteria set forth in the city RFQ. Based on that review, it is the staff, the staff and committee recommendation that Johnson Control Company be selected as a qualified bidder, and that the city manager be directed to enter into negotiations with Johnson Control to execute a detailed contract for this project, and to bring that contract back to city council for approval. So having said that, if you look at the resolution, we would recommend that you change part of it, where it says authorize and direct the city manager to execute a contract. Instead, it would be to negotiate a contract for consulting services with Johnson Controls consistent with the intent of the RFQ, that that resulting contract would come back to this council for final approval. And with that, I would recommend approval of the attached resolution.
Thank you. Excuse me, are you changing the text of the resolution? Is that what you just said? You're changing the text?
Yes. With that amendment, please.
I'm looking at the resolution for the, for the statement that you're suggesting we change from authorizes you to approve it to authorizing you to negotiate. Where is that?
I have no, this is now therefore be resolved.
Ah, okay.
It'd be the next to last line.
And directs the city manager to negotiate a contract?
Yes.
With intent of, with bringing it back to council?
That is correct.
Okay, is there, are you all comfortable with that word change without seeing it in front of you?
Yes, when it comes to a vote, I'm comfortable with that change, but we probably want to hear from the public first.
I understand. I'm just trying to do one thing at a time, but thank you for the reminder. Okay. Any questions for Bruce of his staff report?
Bruce, if I understand correctly, there has not yet been a determination as to a preferred site for the solar farm, or whether there should be two solar farms. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so earlier, there was suggestion that a solar farm be located next to the treatment plant. That's still a possibility?
Certainly. So you would, you know, placement of the solar farm, you want to place a farm where it meets the criteria and is the most functional?
Yeah. All right.
John?
Chair. Bruce, is there any indication as to whether this will lead to a grid tie system wherein the city's electricity bill is essentially reduced by producing power that's put into the Pacific Power System, or going to lead to a self-contained battery-supported independent power system, or a combination? Do you have any idea?
Well, we, these systems, depending on the systems, they use batteries and other systems, and they feed back excess power into the grid.
So it could be a combination?
It could be a combination, yes.
And I've asked this, sorry, it's okay. I asked this before, but the possibility of either using... I asked this before, but the possibility of either using roos of buildings or parking lots, those are all still options.
Yes, with part of this, we will look at, the city has two parking lots, the Parker Plaza Parking Lot and the parking lot on Lake Street. And we would have that as part of the feasibility of covering those lots with photovoltaic covers. So that'd be part of the feasibility.
What about the library parking lot? I thought we talked about that.
We could do the library parking lot. We'll look at putting actual facilities on the library building.
On the building, uh huh.
Well, I'd love to hear some public comments since I remembered it this time. Is there any public comment? I see Brian in the audience, welcome, representative from Johnson Controls. Okay, seeing no interest in a public comment, then what is the resolution number?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two. You've changed. Okay, may I hear a motion for approval for the resolution as reworded?
Move approval of CCR 18-52, resolution of city council, the city of Mount Shasta approving an agreement for professional services with Johnson Control. Here we go, selecting, selecting Johnson, I'm sorry. Resolution to the city council, the city of Mount Shasta selecting Johnson Control as a successful respondent for the city's request for qualification for the proposed photovoltaic energy project as amended by city manager.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approved it is unanimously, thank you. Let's move now to item number nine on your agenda, acceptance of COF and Associates' proposal for the classification study and salary survey. Muriel, our finance director?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Before you is a proposal for a classification and total compensation study. In negotiations with the city employee associations, the city agreed to solicit proposals to conduct this classification study and salary survey. In July 2018, the city issued a request for proposal to five organizations that had been referred to us through the League of California Cities.
You're speaking very quickly and not very close to the mic for my ear.
Well, just start over then.
Well, or just, just slow down maybe.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, in negotiations with the city employees association, the city council agreed to solicit proposals to conduct a classification study and salary survey. In July of 2018, the city issued this request for proposal to five organizations that had been referred to us through the League of California Cities list serve. What we received was one proposal from this COF and Associates. The amount of the, well, there are actually two ways to go with this particular proposal, and of course, I went with the least expensive. But anyway, the financial impact of that is $42,746. We have already budgeted $25,000 through Fund 62, which is the defederalized CDBG monies that we've received over the years. The remaining $17,746, I'm suggesting that it be funded through the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund, because those are the other funds that, those are the funds that carry our employees. So it makes sense for that to go there.
That was a question.
Yeah, the, this particular Fund 62, Economic Enhancement Fund, has $130,000 in it at this point. The council had already approved the $25,000 in the, when we were, when we did the budget in June. We did get one other proposal that was late, and their proposal was at a minimum of $70,000 to do the same thing. So that was a pretty wide variance between the, between the two. So I also did some research and contacted some of the places who have used these folks, and they have glowing reports about how they, how professional they are and how they conduct their, their studies. So my recommendation is to move forward with doing this compensation and classification study.
Thank you, Muriel. Questions for Muriel?
Don't know if it's a question or not, Muriel, but we had a classification and salary study done when Jeff Boosloff was manager of Mount Shasta. The city should still have that classification study and salary study, and the real question for me is, can we reduce the amount of services being provided by COF and Associates and the, the cost to the city potentially with that, as a result of that prior classification study and salary study?
Right, that's my, my hope and wish to negotiate with them to actually reduce this, this price down. Unfortunately, that classification study was done more than 10 years ago, so it's a bit stale. The Public Works Department has been completely reformed in the way that they do their work. We have a new fire department, which was not a part of that study back then. We've got, there are, there are some differences, but saying that, that said, there are a lot of things that are still similar, in which case, to provide them all of those descriptions and all of the things that we do may get us some, some discounts perhaps, and that's absolutely what I will try to do.
So, Muriel, I take it you were a bit surprised when the cost came in as high as it did, or else we would have budgeted more initially?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. It was, basically what I was budgeting was for one or the other survey in reality, but to do both of them, it was about double.
And we don't have the option of not doing this at all. We committed to do this during the union negotiation process.
We did commit to this.
So. Okay, any other questions of Muriel? Any public comment on this item? No, okay, seeing none. And the resolution number will be 53. Would someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve resolution CCR 18-53, resolution of city council, city of Mount Shasta approving an agreement for professional services with COF and Associates for a classification and compensation study.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous again, thank you. Okay, when will we expect to find the results of that, Muriel? I'm sorry, I'm out of.
July.
July? I've forgotten.
We don't have a huge deadline on that. We need to certainly get it before we go into negotiations, which I'm going to push for, for March or April, actually. So we, so it gives us a good, a chunk of time to, to negotiate.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
General plan, are we doing the draft scope or the draft vision first?
We can do either or, but I believe the scope was scheduled first.
Okay, that's fine. You'll see that the recommended council action under that item says vision, by the way.
For, oh, sorry, the items got switched.
Yeah, they got switched, so that's what I was asking.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, they're both basically intertwined.
Okay, fine. So we look forward to hearing from you, Juliana.
So this is a little bit late in the process for our general plan, but one of the reasons why we took a little bit more time on this is kind of, this is the bulk of what we need to move forward with our general plan revision. So as you may remember, back in, I believe it was late 2016, early 2017, Planning Commission recommended to city council, and it was approved that the general plan enter into a revision process to adequately address new state mandates, as well as climate change, among others, from the recommendations of our resilience dialogue, and as a part of our technical assistance received from the Environmental Protection Agency, Federal Emergency Management Association, and the Bay Area governments with the Office of Planning and Research. So the way that we did this first section, we wanted to focus on what sections of the general plan we would like to do, so there are mandated sections and there's optional sections. So I will go through what's mandated by the state that you have to do so that we understand what's going to be in that document, and then I'll bring up some optional things that are being proposed by the Planning Commission based off of input from the, based on input I've received since I've been here for two years, as well as input received from those Planning Commission meetings. So the scope is.
Juliana, let me just interrupt you for a second, in terms of clarity about what we're doing tonight, what you're asking us to approve.
Mm-hmm.
I was a bit surprised to see all of the data in this staff report about what's under each of the mandatory elements.
Correct.
Are you, are we approving the list of things to be included under each item, or are we simply approving which items will be in the plan?
Both.
Both.
So it's primarily education, because you can't, you can't not do the mandatory sections, but basically attachment, let me go all the way to the end. So I highlighted in bold in the staff report the overarching goals that would be in the final plan, and then attachment one, beginning on page 101, would be the revision scope. So those are the goals that we're going to file data analysis, data collection under, and move forward with that. So for example, these are all the recommendations from Planning Commission, which is the steering committee, so they fleshed all these out. So if the city council, for some reason, feels it is not advantageous to go forward with one of the elements, you can discuss that, and I can discuss your options, or one of the optional goals. But as far as the mandatory, we have to do those, and so I just wanted to clarify that. There's, there's certain things you will anticipate, because there's a lot of changes in general plan regulation, and they may be addressing the concerns of council.
Through the chair.
Okay.
And Juliana, when you talk about the mandatory, you're talking, there are mandatory elements, I think there's eight mandatory elements of the general plan, and each of those elements have a table of contents, if you would.
Yeah.
And you're saying that not only are the mandatory elements mandatory, but each of the subdivisions or each part of the table of contents under those mandatory elements is also mandatory, correct?
Correct, and there is an optional, I think the only optional goal in there is under land use, which I will cover in my report if I can continue. Please.
Just, let me just say, I asked that, I interrupted you, because it's important that we understand just how much we actually need to hear and weigh in on versus just being, as you say, educated.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's hearing what's required, and then there's hearing about it, but do we have an option here? That's why I asked you.
So, yeah, so today, we, I'll let you know what your options are at the end, but for the most part, it's pretty much, this has been vetted by the public as well as Planning Commission in the process. So starting off with the eight required elements now are land use, which focuses on where we place things, what are the different zoning codes, city limits and sphere of influence areas, where do you put residential homes, office buildings, retail shop. We use the illustration of you don't want to put a daycare next to a wastewater treatment facility, and that's basically what land use does, is make sure those things don't happen. Circulation looks at city infrastructures, so primarily, it's focused on roads and the new requirements for active transportation, which is cycling and pedestrian infrastructure, but that's also the section that covers water, wastewater, stormwater, trails, and then communications or broadband, which the council has been interested in. Conservation talks about preserving and conserving natural resources. Open space is kind of the, aims to preserve these spaces, so it's very linked with the conservation element, and it looks at specific things. Safety, long-term, short-term consequences of disaster, housing, which is strategy for affordable, high-quality housing. Noise, ensuring a community is protected from excessive noise levels causing public health issues. And then a new requirement from state Senate Bill 1000 is environmental justice, which identifies disadvantaged communities and strategies to ensure their access to a healthy community. So part of SB 1000 is also increasing our public outreach efforts to disadvantaged communities, and those are ones that are at 30% below median income. We can have our own definition, as long as it's more strict than the state, but we really hang with that one. So some of the optional elements that we investigated are water resources, public facilities, smart, which is also known as technology, wealth or economic development, and then cultural and historical. So the visioning process went on at the same time as the scoping, and so we did take a poll of individuals through the scoping survey of which topic areas that they're most concerned with. The top three were safety, climate change, and housing. Land use was number four, and then transportation was number five. So those were the things that people found important, so we wanted to make sure we did that. So we broke the scope down into three portions and did three presentations at the Planning Commission level in which we allowed public comment and questions for each individual element, and we wanted to do that to make sure people really wholly understood what was going into the plan. People had an ability to give public input on certain things and where they would fall into this, so some of that is reflected in the recommendations. So for, for land use on page 86 in bold type, those are the mandatory goals, which is identifying the distribution, location, and extent of housing businesses, industry, open space for the various options, education facilities, public facilities, solid waste disposal, military land use, and it has to correlate with the circulation element. So this land use ends up becoming a land use designation map, that's what's in the general plan, and that land use designation map is what's narrowed down into the zoning code. And so when we talk about extent, what they're talking about is we have to talk about housing density, so how many housing units can you have per acre, and it talks about how many people you can have per property. So we have to report those down.
If I may interrupt for a moment, that would be a local decision, is that correct?
Yes and no. The state does have purview over certain things, so if you kind of think about the multi-housing bills that have been coming through the state, that supersedes the city in certain circumstances, but the city does recommend, you know, desired densities, things like that, that are, that are in the land use designation. There is a recommended optional goal in the land use element. One of the big conversations that we have in the city of Mount Shasta, not just within the Planning Commission, is what the definition of alpine is. As far as our architectural design, there's a lot of different definitions, and so it's been kind of a point of contention for developers over the years with Planning Commission as well as the Planning Department. And so the Planning Commission is recommending the inclusion of an optional goal, which is determine physical character of the built environment, specifically looking at different neighborhoods, special districts, which would be the Roseburg property, for example, any type of specific plans, downtown district, as well as corridors. This is a pretty common goal that's seen in a lot of general plan land use elements as an urban design element to help flesh out what those are. Some of the public input that would be related to that is doing a urban design open house, as well as placing things online for people to highlight different styles that they're interested in, trying to quantify and qualify what the physical character of the built environment should be. Again, and that's just to help clarify what the style of the city is, whether it's alpine or natural or whatever it ends up being from that process. I think it would be advantageous to do this. The architectural design guidelines are about eight years old at this point, and again, there's a lot of ambiguity that could be solved by taking public input and placing this into the land use element. So at the bottom of page 87, it kind of talks about some of the data that's related to this element. I won't go in depth into that. And then other things that are addressed in the land use element is unincorporated areas. So as you'll see from the document that you would be approving tonight, is the, the general plan would result in an annexation priority criteria. One of the things we haven't done here in the city of Mount Shasta, that's a best practice for a lot of cities in their general plan, is to prioritize different areas that are highly likely to be annexed within one to five years, five to 10 years, things like that. So one of the end products in the land use element will be unincorporated areas that are prioritized. The impetus for doing this would be pre-zoning, so we talk about pre-zoning is required for annexations. So we talk about pre-zoning is required for annexations. This would basically pre-zone all of your possible annexations ahead of time and save you a lot of time because the general plan is done through an environmental impact report, so you would already have SEQA done on your pre-zoning for the areas you would be most likely to annex in the next five years. Saves you money, saves you time.
Thank you. I'm hoping that questions as we go along is the appropriate way to do it, since this is a fairly long report.
Yep.
Thank you. So in this paragraph under unincorporated areas, the last sentence says, "In the city of Mount Shasta's case, Siskiyou Highlands, Azalea, and Deets would be considered in the general plan."
Correct.
Why would not the entire sphere of influence be considered?
So the entire sphere of influence is, but those areas are given higher priority per state legislation because they're already pre-developed. And basically what the state of California says, if you have a highly developed area, so you have properties that are already built out, especially if they're on septic systems that are older, those need to be considered more highly than other areas.
So does this include, for instance, Timber Hills?
Yeah, those would be included as well.
Those are all okay.
Gateway neighborhoods, those would be highly considered, as well as Quail Hill subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was just an example.
Oh, those are examples.
Actually, a lot of our sphere of influence is fairly developed and so would need to be considered.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then how we did it for Planning Commission is we just divided questions out per element so that people were on track, so that we're not answering land use questions in housing, for example. So if you have any other questions about land use, it's probably best to do it now. Okay, cool. Circulation, there were no optional elements.
Okay, question about land use. City council has adopted a position that anyone who lives in Mount, or anyone who works in Mount Shasta should be able to reside in Mount Shasta. That would be considered part of the general plan, is that correct?
It's not mandated, no.
It's not mandated, but it would come under the housing element or land use element because the city has taken that position that anyone who works in Mount Shasta should be able to reside in Mount Shasta.
That would probably be most organized under the city's proposed economic development element. Because you'd probably be looking at pay as well as jobs in it. And again, one of the things to bring up about all of these elements is there's internal consistency. So all of the elements have to communicate with each other. So again, just because the city council took that, it's not state mandated that I look at that, but it's something you can bring up when we start to investigate further into these elements. So again, these are the peripheral major goals, but if you have specific goals like that, if you approve this element, for example, economic development is optional. You do not have to approve that going forward. But if you do, when we do public outreach for that, when we start doing more of the in-depth assessment, you can bring that goal up and it would be assessed at that time.
Wouldn't that also be considered in land use and housing?
So it would depend upon, again, what we're looking at. It would probably fit more under economic development because you're looking at how much you're paying people to be able to live and the cost of living and things like that.
I was thinking of it from the other aspect of providing housing opportunities for people at all levels of income.
So why don't we wait until we get to housing because that gets addressed there? So let's take it element by element, please.
Okay.
So the next one is circulation. Housing is third, so it's coming up. So circulation focuses not just on transportation, but the whole reason why they call it circulation is it's the movement of people, goods, energy, service, and communication through city or private infrastructure. So it's basically answering the questions of how do we get there? Where are people going? So required goals start on the top of page 89 and actually, Planning Commission is not recommending any additional goals to this section. One of the things to note is that there's been a high priority placed on active transportation. And so within the new state regulations, cyclists, children, persons with different abilities, motorists, movers of goods, pedestrians, users of public transit, and aging population are called out and are looked at in our circulation element. And then beginning on page 90, some of the data that we look at to support that. So what we've done is in the past, there was a proposed master bike and ped plan. That's basically morphed into your circulation element now and there's a heavier focus in the state of California placed on active transportation. The reason being for this is the state of California, by 2020, will no longer look at level of service of roads for the SEQA process as well as funding. They're looking at what's called VMT, which is vehicle miles traveled. So in the past, when we talked about level of service, we're looking at congestion and how many people are using a road. The state of California no longer has that as a priority. What their priority is, is reducing the amount of travel people do in cars. That becomes exceptionally difficult for rural areas because you can't just not drive in certain parts of this area like an urban area. But we live in the state of California and they make legislation based on urban areas and not rural. So unfortunately, we're going to have to move over to reducing vehicle miles traveled because ultimately, that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which is the goal of the state of California. So that's going to be a very heavy theme within this element is reducing our carbon footprint as well as promoting people walking and biking more. Do you have questions on circulation?
Quick question, how does electric cars come into play on that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. One of the things that was done, which is not listed in the staff report, but it's actually listed in the final scope of work, we were originally proposing a SMART or technology element. That was not approved by Planning Commission and they brought up a good point, is that technology moves so fast and a general plan is supposed to be a very static document that if we did a technology element, it would go stale within a matter of a year, not even. So what we ended up doing is part of a third goal in the circulation element on page 101, consider the impact of existing and future development on energy systems, i.e. propane, electric consumption. And sub-goals, identify and map alternative fuel vehicle infrastructure, identify and map communication technology infrastructure, as well as the energy itself. So we did kind of take that into account within the circulation element rather than doing a standalone for that. So that technically would be an optional element as well that you could take out if you don't want it. But it was held as a priority, Planning Commission did vote that, you know, mapping the technology area and communications was super important, so we had to include that.
I guess my, okay, thank you. I guess I'm wondering, vehicle miles traveled is different if you're on an electric vehicle versus a gas?
Nope, not in state of California.
Okay. So same, it's a different footprint, but they're counting it the same.
Correct.
All right.
Whether you're traveling in gas or electric, it's one vehicle mile traveled. You do not get a discount. Any other questions for circulation infrastructure? So housing, now on page 90. Housing is different from other sections of the general plan. It's highly prescriptive, what we have to include in this, and so there were no requested additional features or goals into this element. So you'll see beginning on page 90, there's an excessive amount of public participation of all economic sectors. And this again goes back to Senate Bill 1000. We need to do an accurate survey as well as getting input from those in the extremely low, very low, and low-income areas. Thankfully, we've been working with the Community Resource Center to reach out to these individuals and as you'll see from our visioning survey, we did have at least a 23% very low, extremely low-income individuals take our survey. So there's a big push for that as we'll go through the entire, so even though it's a goal under housing, it's a goal for all of the elements.
Juliana, clarifications? 23% of the people who filled out the survey were in the low or very low-income bracket?
Very low or extremely low.
That's, okay, so that's what you, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So again, I'm not going to go through these super in-depth, but there's a housing needs assessment, which we kind of covered in our housing discovery report. Those are the recommended amount of units we're supposed to be building from our regional housing needs assessment, which is done for the county. We have to do an assessment of housing for special needs, which those are listed on page of, top of page 91. We have to look at at-risk units. And then similar to our housing discovery report, we have to look at government and non-governmental constraints to the housing situation, site inventory, how old houses are, when was the last time that they went through the building process? And then quantified objectives and programs to meet our regional housing needs assessment. Most of the information we had in our housing discovery report will be built upon and a more in-depth housing study will be done and some of those objectives will be integrated into this housing element.
So if I may, through the chair. Juliana, I recognize that every city has a percentage share or a quota, so to speak, of housing that has to be provided. I see that different and less important really than our making a local determination as to our housing needs. So again, I'm bringing up this question of where in the housing element are we going to address that issue of making sure that we have housing for all available, housing available for all income levels? Not just, not just what the state tells us we have to have, but what we as a community think that we have to have.
So again, as we go through the process and take public input, if it comes out, we want to set a higher loftier goal for ourselves, we can do that. But as per the state, we're only required to do the regional assessment. So again, at, once the scope is complete and we start going through public input for each section of that and that comes out as being a need, we can set those numbers higher and hold ourselves to a higher standard if that's what happens.
I have another, to the chair. Okay, I have another question on page 90 at the end, under item number nine. You talk about gentrification.
Mm-hmm.
That was mentioned because, is the ultimate goal to, like you said, to provide housing for all levels of income, therefore to try to avoid the process of gentrification somehow?
Mm-hmm. Gentrification is a topic that's called out as being suggested to be addressed and it's something that will have to be addressed in the housing element, especially when we start talking about displacement from natural disasters and social pressures. Again, we take a look at older housing stock. For example, housing that's right next to the railroad is not considered adequate housing for any income level just due to public health concerns. So the housing element will have to look at those different areas and make recommendations about how to deal with that.
Okay. So we want to be able to find a housing, housing situation for this person that obviously is paying probably low rent, given the location and maybe how long that property's been there. So where can we put that person?
That would be fleshed out in this element.
Okay.
That would be fleshed out in this element. So again, this is the broad overview. We haven't delved into any of the specifics because I want the scope approved before I start delving into something because I don't want to delve into something when it ends up not being included.
Thank you.
Okay, open space. So open space is interconnected with conservation, so that's detailed information about undeveloped land, which is primarily focused on natural resources, production of resources. So timber management areas are a high concern. Surface mines, we do happen to have a surface mine in the city as well as in our sphere of influence. Tribal resources is a new requirement under SB 1000 as well as AB 52. And then inventory of maps, policies and location of open space for these different areas, comprehensive long-term plans for preservation, and then providing an action program for meeting all of these. So I'm going to kind of combine it with conservation because they intertwine so closely. So again, top of page 93, conservation includes looking at a number of different issues, fisheries, obviously soils, forest, wildlife, minerals, again, going back to the mining. And then the element has to be concerned with different water agencies, so flood management districts, there's one around Lake Siskiyou that we would have to consider in this element, water conservation districts, and then groundwater, which is under new legislation. A big thing about each element is it will have to coordinate with different county, state agencies' plans so that we're consistent with the state. And then the interesting thing about, on the bottom of page 93, the conservation element is mandated that it may also cover reclamation of land from mining. So there's a bunch of different things that can be included in that, protection of watersheds, which is all state mandated. And then conservation element identifies creeks, rivers, and a number of different habitat areas, as well as floodwater, groundwater, recharge, and stormwater management. So open space conservation.
So just to clarify again, so when it says it may cover, are we actually deciding at this meeting right now whether it's in there or not? Or you're just saying, right now, you're just saying that may cover, it hasn't been decided yet?
So what, I actually did get clarification from the Office of Planning and Research. When they use the word "may," they understand that some of these do not qualify in our jurisdiction and so we may address them or we may not. So for example, protection of watersheds would be included because we're part of a region water action group, part of the upper Saks, so that would be included. Location, quantity, and quality of rock, sand, and gravel resources, that would be included because we have a surface mine related to it. So it's basically if they, if they qualify in our area, a lot of these do because we have a lot of natural resources.
Okay.
So the first optional element is the water resource element, which has been discussed and pulled out. And actually, it's basically how we got Frank and Derek here and they're basically working on this already. One of the things that's highly important, bless you, to many people in the area and one of the major things that came out of the visioning survey is clean water is a topic that most of the survey respondents talked about, not necessarily even clean water, but having Mount Shasta spring water as a public municipal good. So water resource has been included. It is actually becoming a, it's being investigated as a required element in the future. It's highly suggested that you do this because you will most likely be mandated to do it shortly in the future. So the optional goals that we have lined out is consider the impact of future development on water resources, including watershed management, groundwater supply, quality, and recharge, which actually 1B is going to be a requirement for our area soon under the State Groundwater Management Act. So we're going to have to do that eventually, so it's best probably to do it now. Drought tolerance, biotic resources, which is water, vegetation, ducks, waterfowl, fish, things like that. Water quality in general, stormwater recycle, water conservation and reuse, and importing and exporting. There's obviously a large contingent, well, two contingents of people related to the importing and exporting of water. What this goal isn't saying is that it's good or bad. What it is, is that, saying is that it would be considered. So just developing an overarching policy of where you fit on the spectrum for that. It's, I think, been a difficult topic for a lot of people to talk about in some direction in your general plan, would most likely help a lot of councils in the future on how you're going to talk about that or make policy around it. So it's not saying you have to say no importing, exporting at all, or let it all go. It's saying where do you fit on that spectrum and having that conversation. So again, on page 92, water resource element, identify the historic and cultural aspects of water for preservation, identify existing and proposed green infrastructure correlated with the land use and open space elements, and identify objectives and policies to address impacts of climate change and development on water resources. Most of these, if not all of them, are highly correlated with other water resource elements that are being proposed and worked on in the state. And so the other city that's working on this at the same time as we are is the city of Arvin, which is in Southern California. So they're covering the same overarching goals, but they're going to have very different policies and recommendations than we are. But it's probably close to the framework that the state's looking at doing.
Juliana, just a question about process around all of this. Is there a requirement for tribal consultation? How does that?
Correct.
How is that integrated in all these elements?
So tribal consultation is required under Assembly Bill 52. And so what we've done is we've reached out to all 16 registered Native American, California native tribe agencies. We've also reached out to ones that are not on the list and basically said, you know, we try and meet with them on the front end to talk about different goals and things that they have in mind, but they are consulted on all varieties of these things. So I've reached out to all of them and established relationships with the ones that would like to contribute. And then we also send periodic, quarterly letters to the ones that we haven't heard from, just in case, so that they can give input at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So page 95, environmental justice. Again, these are required goals now, is identifying disadvantaged communities, identifying objectives and policies to reduce the unique or compounded health risks in disadvantaged communities, including the following, reduction in pollution exposure, improve air quality, promotion of public facilities, local healthy food access, safe and sanitary homes, physical activity. And then it's similar to the housing element in that it has to identify specific objectives and policies to promote civil engagement, as well as how we're going to promote these things that we have to promote and reduce the pollutant exposure. So those- So those are all required.
Just another quick question. Do we know what percentage of the Mount Shasta population is Spanish-speaking? And if so, would we be offering any Spanish translation of anything?
Oh, we can. I have not been really contacted that we have a large contingent. As far as the visioning survey went, we had about 7% Native American, Native Alaskan was the highest percentage that we had for ethnic nationality or groups with an origin other than white. But we can offer that if that's something we would like to include.
Those were respondents to our survey you're talking about? Yeah, well.
And we'll get there, yeah. We're primarily 94.
Right, if they don't speak English, they're not going to respond to our survey. So I just, I think it might be helpful to, I don't know how we find that out, but.
We did, we did offer the survey in other.
They would be considered a disadvantaged community, I would imagine, or at least.
So one of the things with the Qualtrics survey is that we can offer that in other languages. So we didn't have anyone request it, and then we did put it out to a different, a couple different groups, we asked to, to do that. We didn't have a high contingency. If anything, we probably have a larger Hmong population in Siskiyou County than we do Hispanic.
Right, but not necessarily in Mount Shasta.
Yep. And we can reach out to them if you would really like to, and we can make a point of contacting different groups if that's a high priority. Again, we are looking at the Community Resource Center, among other, we have about 18 different organization contacts that I have right now that are pretty active, and so talking to them and meeting with them. And we can identify other groups to reach out to those ethnicities if that's a priority. Again, page 96 goes into safety. This is really, really broad, and they do that on purpose because now the safety element has to coordinate with a city's local hazard mitigation plan. We have submitted a draft 2018 update for ours and have not received feedback from FEMA yet, but once that's back in, we would focus on the hazards listed in that. And there's about 14 hazards that are in there that would all be characterized, as well as mapped for all potential hazard areas. This also addresses evacuation routes, as far as, you know, where we would be going. This all coordinates with the circulation element. And the safety element is the only element that's reviewed from outside agencies. So CAL FIRE and then CAL OES, Office of Emergency Services, review the safety element prior to coming to Planning Commission or Council. So they actually do review it before it comes in. And we've already had a review of our previous one from CAL FIRE, so we know where some points of improvement are. The next optional one is public facilities, which the optional goals of that are cataloging and forecasting public facilities, infrastructure, and city personnel. Establish future policy regarding the provision of services. Integrate public service concerns and land use decision-making, and outline funding and capital improvements plan. This is an element being updated by a lot of cities to consider things like firehouses, fire apparatuses, police stations, police force personnel, because as you grow in your land use, because the land use is assuming you're growing, even though our data doesn't show that, what it does is, it says, okay, as we grow, as we start permitting more developments, how are our city facilities and personnel also growing to meet that new need? Because it's assumed the more we grow, the more safety, the more fire personnel we will Noise is a mandated element, and it has really, really specific goals, starting on 97, I'm not going to read through them, but it's basically establishing noise benchmarks. A lot of these are used in our SEQA process when we review different individual developments. It establishes noise contours throughout the city, and then establishes a guide for the pattern of land uses. And one of the things that we elaborated on as a planning commission, right when I first got here, was making sure that these noise levels are determined per land use type, which we do not do now. We do a general noise bracket, but the new best practice is basically doing it per land use type. So we assume a commercial downtown is going to be louder than a residential neighborhood. That's just the nature of it. And one of the things we talk about with noise is that noise is not necessarily a bad thing unless it's at very high levels, and that noise could actually be an indicator of a successful downtown or a healthy community. It means that people are outside engaging in different events. And so the other things that were added, so again, A through D are optional on the top of page 98, which is determine appropriate levels of noise of venues that frequently are used for special events, determine levels of noise for temporary events, which is like construction events, changes in traffic patterns, determine appropriate grandfathering and transition of current uses to new, and this is just in discussion. As we grow, if we do need a larger commercial downtown, that's going to start growing out from the current center. And so how do we grandfather in certain uses that are quieter, or were originally established in quieter neighborhoods as our downtown expands, to accommodate growth? And again, the noise element has implementation measures and possible solutions to address existing and foreseeable noise problems. So this is where you would see some discussion on the railroad. So economic development is a optional element, but Planning Commission is in support of including it in the general plan. And the optional goals are characterizing the type and diversity of the economy, so looking at what types of industries are here currently, what type of industries are growing, and looking at that data. Cataloging government, non-government constraints to the economy, so similar to housing, looking at what's going on and what may be issues for business development here in the city. Categorizing the workforce of the city, what is the age group that's here, what are the type of skills that people have? It's important to have an adequate workforce to accommodate business growth. Identifying the gate impacts of climate change on the economy. This is looking at hazard mitigation and disaster readiness. That's a, a common theme right now, is making sure businesses, if they do happen to be hit by a wildfire or flood, I think it's a pretty ridiculous amount of them end up failing within the year after that disaster. But what this would look at is negating those impacts. Another big thing to note is that our economy is based on tourism, and so climate change, changing weather patterns has a huge impact on our tourism. And since that is the basis of our economy, we need to look at what are some ways to combat that? For example, smoke, getting rid of most of our tourists that we had for the summer.
Getting rid of what else, smoke?
Smoke, having that impact, that would be discussed. And then identify community assets and fiscal stability, and this basically looks at nonprofit, private, and city fiscal ability to provide business services, business loans, business grants. And then finally, the historical and cultural is another optional element. It's a common element that a lot of cities are bringing in, especially with our place in California. We have a rich historic and cultural perspective that could be tapped into more for tourism or for architectural guideline materials, and could actually become a bigger asset in the community than it is. So the optional goals recommended for this are describe and map physical and historical qualities of the community, describe cultural environment of the jurisdiction. And what this looks at is that there's different spaces and materials needed for cultural development. So you need artists, artists need supplies, they need workspace. So it's looking at all those different things associated with that cultural area. Identify and map cultural sites and areas supporting cultural capital. So Sis and Meadow would be an example of one that supports artists. As going out there, you can see people painting. Other cultural sites, again, are the galleries that would support the selling of it. So it's kind of looking at a supply chain of cultural capital. And then identify framework to develop historic and cultural resources. So these specific goals were taken from the state historic preservation and then the new arts and cultural district agencies. And these are required goals for cities that are applying for cultural districts, as well as historic districts. So if you were to go forward with this, it would already get you further in the process for establishing those with the state, and would make you more open to historic and cultural program funding. Finally, we did talk about including a technology element, and some of those specific optional goals are at the top of page 100. Again, the Planning Commission is not recommending to do a separate technology element, but to rope a majority of these goals into the circulation element. So some of them that did not make it into the circulation element are identification of open data and multimedia communication opportunities, and I think that's pretty much the only one that didn't make it in. Oh, and consider impacts of emerging technologies on existing infrastructure. One of the things discussed is that if we would like to discuss emerging technologies, they change so often that a separate action plan should be created that is able to be renewed every year to discuss those. And so they elected to not include that in the general plan at this time. So most likely, in the circulation element, you will have a goal, policy, and implementation measure of doing that emergency tech, or merging technology action plan. It's just something that's a little bit too, it, it updates itself too frequently to be included in a static document.
So Juliana, let me, let me ask you, in terms of the smart element, which the Planning Commission is, is not recommending, in the conferences that I've gone to, they've suggested that we look at connecting fiber optics to the sewage treatment plant, connecting fiber optics to our traffic control systems, so that our, our traffic lights are interconnected with optic, with fiber optic.
The sensing networks.
Right.
Yep.
The, the sewer lines, the water lines, become smart sewer lines and water lines because of sensing network. That seems like that would be natural for the smart element versus some other element. I don't see how we morph those sorts of things into circulation or something else.
Yep. So actually, I took a look at a couple of other cities that have a pretty big tech ground, background. So Palo Alto has their technology integrated into their circulation as well. And one thing to note, so we have identify and map different technologies within circulation, but also within the public facilities optional element, we also provided a line item of discussing future needs or future improvements to the infrastructure or future policy. And so that can also be echoed within those two elements.
So if the council takes action tonight to approve the, the scope, are you asking us to eliminate smart element or keep that in as a consideration?
No, Planning Commission is, is recommending not to have it. I, I agree that I did not, excuse me, I did not anticipate the explanation, but I like that it, it was brought up because technology does evolve so quickly, and your general plan is supposed to be static. So I think what will end up happening is we'll talk about emerging technologies in the circulation technology section, and then the sensing networks will be included in the optional public facilities and circulation. If you elect not to do public facilities, it'll be in the circulation element. It'll, it'll be in there. It needs to be addressed, and it's a big trend in infrastructure, so it'll be talked about in the technology section. So I am not recommending the smart element, and neither is Planning Commission.
And you're, and you're representing to us that if we don't have a smart element, which is something that you had recommended to us, I think, a year or two ago, that things like smart water system, start smart sewer system, sensing of those systems, the fiber optic connection for the traffic control system, fiber optic for other infrastructure, would all be in other elements, one or more other elements, is that correct?
Pretty much in circulation. That's primarily where they will be housed, and then the sensing network for infrastructure will most likely be echoed in the public facilities. But technology itself would fit into the circulation element. So again, looking at other cities and best practices, and knowing that these are topics we want to address and need to address. Like I said, I took a look, and like I said, even Palo Alto, for being the tech center of the world, they put it in their circulation element. So I, I support the recommendation from Planning Commission to move it into the existing circulation and not doing the standalone.
Okay.
So it will be addressed.
Okay.
Yeah.
It makes sense to me in that really, it's about the how, how we do things, and, and the, the circulation element is what. So we'd have to be integrating them anyway. So, yeah, it makes sense to me, as certainly, as long as we, it's a goal in the circulation element.
Well, it may take us 20 years to, to accomplish smart systems. General plan is normally a 20-year plan, reviewable either annually or every five years. So I'm less concerned about where it is in the general plan than I am making sure it is in the general plan.
I think we've been assured.
So basically, that concludes kind of the really brief overview. Barbara Kinates, she attended all of the, the Planning Commission scoping sessions. So starting on page 101, down all the way to deliverables on 107 is the proposed scope and deliverables from the entire general plan process. So some of the deliverables to come out, that'll be coordinated with the general plan, is you'll have a final general plan reported to you in 2020, an updated zoning code to reflect that general plan, an annexation timeline and integration plan, which again, looks at the criteria for annexation, and then recommends priority areas and pre-zoning, public facilities master plan, which we're actually pretty far into already, an open space and green infrastructure master plan, which is basically your trails, conservation easements, park planning, stormwater improvements, and then urban design guidelines, which is a combination of your architectural design guidelines to be updated as well. So those six things should accompany the general plan coming out.
So will any of this, Juliana, come out prior to 2045? How do we decide?
So this is all going to be completed by 2020. Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's, that's better, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, yes, that's much better, okay.
So some of the deliverables may be slightly after the general plan, so the general plan will need to be approved first, but we'll be working on all of these other deliverables at the same time to then, once you say yes, this is the general plan, they'll be easily approved within the next consecutive meetings.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Juliana, what I gather from this is the, when we're doing the general plan this time, we're doing it in-house rather than contracting out, is that correct?
So if possible, if we can approve the scope and the vision today, I, there are three major grants that are available right now. What we're going to be doing is the synthesizing and writing in-house, and then I'll be applying for grant funding for data collection and data analysis from subject area experts. So again, for example, if we do the historic-cultural, we would need to hire someone to do a cultural assessment who's much more knowledgeable in that area than other people. Land use, most likely, we will do in-house. I've actually already quasi-started on how that would fit together. But we would need a traffic engineering consultant, which is part of one of the funding areas, safety. So there are a couple of grant and technical advisors that I would hire to assist with the data collection and analysis.
So basically, in-house without outside consultants?
Correct.
What we did previously was simply contract out for a company elsewhere to write our general plan for us, gave it to us, and then it got adopted, which was less satisfying than I would have liked.
Doing it this.
Than this process, I think, will be.
Doing it this way ensures that you have public comment under each element in different facets. So everyone will have a chance to comment on the minutia that will be going into, again, water resource management. There will be a larger conversation on that. It takes a little bit more time, but again, we're, we're being watched by a lot of different state agencies in how we do it, because a lot of people are interested in what's going to come out of the process, because it's a little bit more thorough.
Well, I'd just like to thank the, the work the Planning Commission and you have put into this incredibly thorough, a big, big job, and I, I consider myself a little bit better educated tonight. So thank you for the time you put into the staff report, and hats off to the planning commissioners. So are we looking for a motion?
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to second that comment.
You want to second that comment? Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of Juliana before we go to public comment? Seeing none, are there any of you in the audience who would like to share your thoughts with us? Raven with a broken arm.
I know.
Wow.
Let's not talk about that tonight. Raven Stevens, Mount Shasta. Under the water resource element, it, it occurs to me that, and I don't Under the water resource element, it, it occurs to me that, and I don't, we'll probably talk about it more in detail later, Juliana, but that we might want to take a look at removing the water bottling exemption, or at least take a look at that. I definitely think we need the, the noise element updated because it hasn't been done in a very, very long time. And I was, oh, I didn't write down the other thing. Water. Oh, in regards to land use, the gateway neighborhood area wasn't actually specifically mentioned, and we're so much closer than like Dietz Road, and I'm not sure how Dietz Road got mentioned and the gateway area didn't. But if we include those areas, we wouldn't have half of the, I think, the issues that we do have if we had a little more input that way. So like to see that added if we can. Thanks.
Any other comments? Roslyn?
Roslyn McCoy, Mount Shasta. The only thing that I haven't heard is concerning light pollution and our so-called dark skies. And if we could put something in our general plan to help maintain that, that would be really nice.
John?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember John Adamson, member of Mount Shasta City. I think what's important to kind of note here, at least what I would like you as a decision-making body, not as individuals, but as a decision-making body, to take in and understand in this situation is the complicated matter that you're dealing with right now. Right now, I can look at three people in this room that have written general plan updates and done this kind of work, and it's complicated. There's nothing about it that isn't complicated. If this is the first general plan that you've read and operated with, with an update, I hear you. I, I get it. The other three people in the room, we've worked with this multiple times. That said, what I want you to do is I want you to go ahead and look at the quality work that has been done here by your staff. I want you to believe in them. I want you to look at this and say, this is a great place for us to start, to go ahead. These things can be amended, and they do get amended. There's absolutely no question about it. But you got to push, you got to push the process forward. You can't micromanage it. You can't basically try and work little tiny details out. That's not your job as a decision-maker here. Your job is to believe in your staff. And that's what I would ask you to do, is look at this, push it forward, believe in your staff, and find for an approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Other comments? Okay, then I would ask for a motion for approval of the scope for the general plan as presented.
So moved.
So moved. How about a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
A quick question. Given that we had a couple of public comments, do those get incorporated in, when you hear them, or?
So, so yeah, one of the things we did is we did keep pretty detailed notes during Planning Commission about the comments, and actually, I think Roslyn, I think the light pollution is the only new one. And actually, light pollution is talked about in our current general plan, so I think that's in the conservation element, that they do discuss that. So it can be a topic that comes up under the conservation element. So as we, again, dive deeper into each one, we'll explore those options. One of the things we also do is take a review of the previous element and see if there's anything that needs to be kept. So that'll probably be one of the discussions when we get into that.
Okay. So I just wondered how you handled the public comment at this point. Raven mentioned she wanted the actual, the words Gateway Association in the list.
So, yeah.
So, I mean, do we, we approve it, but you're, you just take notes and consider that for a future?
Yep. We file that where it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Unanimous.
Thank you.
How you doing, Juliana? Do you need a voice break, or?
No. We're going to get into the fun part.
Okay, well, move on then to the vision statement.
So one of the things that we did while we were doing the general plan scoping, so a big portion, there's two big sections for data. There's the context, which is set by your community vision for the future, and then there's the actual data and what it's saying. And so one of the big pieces we, we focused on is promoting the, the general plan visioning survey, as well as taking input from different areas of the public. And so a report was prepared based on those, those visioning statements. And all of this was presented at the September meeting for the Planning Commission, and discussion was taken and a draft vision was prepared for you. So again, this is really important to get the vision statement done prior to the larger body of work because this vision serves as the desires of the community for the future, and it gives context to the data that's required for the various elements of the plan. And it helps also develop the land use designations to ensure that areas of the city provide for the future growth and activities that people want to see here. And I'll give an example of that at the end of this report. So the first thing we reviewed is kind of different types of visioning statements. There's actually four different types of visioning statements that are out there for different businesses as well as cities. Cities tend to be superlative in nature, which basically means we will be, or we're going to, we are in 2050. So we follow that kind of superlative vision statement with that futuristic view. So the final vision is basically what we would like to look like in 2045 or sooner, if we happen to get there faster. So some of the different example visions, Fort Bragg was one that the Planning Commission kind of took to because it was very similar to ours, which is that Fort Bragg is a small town with a strong sense of community that seeks to preserve its natural beauty while providing exceptional public facilities and infrastructure, safe streets, and a well-planned framework for sustainable development and prosperity. So when we're putting together our future vision, I don't know if many of you have experience with the 2020 vision, the 2020 vision was an entire page. That's not really a vision statement. We really want it to be short, understandable, simple, easy to grasp. And the harder thing is, is the more you add to that vision, the more there is for convoluted policy. So when you have a bigger vision, you're trying to almost balance your own vision as opposed to just picking one focused forward motion. And so that's why we really focus on keeping it to three sentences maximum, but two sentences at best. So again, I put in Plano, Texas, won the 2018 Comprehensive Plan National Award, and you can see here, they kept it down to basically a list. Plano is vibrant, safe, and sustainable city with attractive neighborhoods and urban centers, a vital economy, a high degree of mobility, and an abundance of educational, recreational, and cultural opportunity. City of Richmond is another one that won the Canadian Comprehensive Plan Award. It's literally one sentence, which is for the city of Richmond to be the most appealing, livable, and well-managed community in Canada. It's pretty simple.
Simple, but not very specific.
Yeah.
I mean, really.
Yeah.
It doesn't provide much guidance.
Well, appealable, livable, and well-managed.
Well, okay.
If, if you're not fiscally in the negative, that means it's well-managed. And again, another one that got the 2018 comprehensive award for California was South Los Angeles. Very simple statement, forward-thinking, what they're focusing on is embracing their history, fostering sustainable neighborhoods, and promoting economic vitality. Those are three things that they're doing for the next 25 years. If we can be very clear about what we're doing, it makes it easier for staff to implement policy, it makes it clear to the community what way we're going, it makes it clear to future city council members that this is where we're going to be in 25 years, and this was determined by the community at large. So our visioning outreach was pretty extensive. So the survey was put together with Planning Commission looking over the questions. It was distributed from June through September of this year. It was deployed in hard copy as well as electronic version. Hard copies were available at the Chamber of Commerce, City Hall, and the library. I also went out at Fourth of July Farmer's Market, the concerts in the park with paper copies as well, and handed those out to people on a number of different occasions. It was also advertised on Facebook and in the Mount Shasta Herald. We did, again, in-person outreach at other events in local businesses, on the city website, general plan Facebook page, which has about 290, 290 members, I believe. We plugged that and paid for Facebook advertisement, so people were made aware of our online survey. We announced it at pretty much every single Planning Commission meeting, and I know at least three city council meetings, we announced it as well. I also took our list of local, regional, state, and federal agencies and emailed a survey link to them at least three times throughout the process to make sure that their members were taking it and promoting that. And we also sent at least two emails to all of the standing committee members in the city of Mount Shasta to take it themselves, as well pushing it out through people they know. And again, Facebook has a pretty decent following, that we also put out paid advertisement for the page itself to raise visibility. And then what we also did, we surveyed high school students at the Mount Shasta High School, took some of their interest and future needs in the city into, into account, and we're going to continue to involve students in the process as we go forward. And again, there's the new requirement to reach out to disadvantaged populations, which for us is people making less than $45,368 per year, which is a decent amount of the population. And so we used the Community Resource Center to really push a lot of those surveys, and we got a great participation from them and the people that use their services. We've pushed out to a lot of other ones, so Escatán, other areas, made sure they had paper copies available, and then just pretty much not stopped talking about it for four months. So the survey was constructed with multiple goals in mind, but the primary goal was to determine what aspects of the community people valued, what they feared would change, and then the changes they would like to see to draft the vision. A secondary goal that I did that was kind of more personal was what is the definition of a small town? People here like to say we like small-town character. What is that? It means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, but we actually, what I did is anytime someone mentioned small-town feel, character, small-town in general, I also took the other responses that they had and aggregated that, and there were actually some common themes that we pulled out as small-town values for the city of Mount Shasta. And then going through some demographics on page 112, primarily, our respondents were 61% female, 38% male, 1% transgender or other respondents. So for the ethnicity and nationality, they were allowed to, to check multiple for mixed race or nationality or origin, but primarily, we are 94% white. That's not odd. 7% other race, nationality, or origin, 2% Native American or Native Alaskan, I think I switched those earlier today, 1% Middle Eastern or North African, and 1% Asian. So respondents' working status, out of all of the respondents who took it, 31% work full-time, 27% are retired, and 25% are self-employed. The average number of residents, so when I took out just people who live in the city of Mount Shasta, as far as those who live in the area, average number of residents per household is 1.9. And then the average time residents have lived in the city of Mount Shasta or the sphere of influence is about four years. So a majority of the people who took the survey are local. 16% are those who live specifically in the sphere of influence, which we did want a big push for those because they were not adequately accounted for in our last survey from, from the last general plan. And then the nice thing was respondents were in equal distribution of all income levels. So basically, it means that we had about 10 to 15% from less than $12,000 to greater than $120,000. So it's pretty much even across the board for respondents' income levels. As far as household, typically, the households in the, in the, out of the survey respondents were making $64,000 or more. So we're seeing those multiple-person households, and when they combine that income, the city of Mount Shasta has some pretty affluent households. But as far as individual members, we did have more people on the lower end of the income distribution.
Just a comment, Juliana, I really like all this demographics you provided. It's very interesting. One, a point of concern for me is that of those who took the survey, the average time they've lived in Mount Shasta is four years. I don't know what that implies that, I don't know what that implies, but I, I, it's hard to believe that if we were, if every person in town had taken this survey, that the average time they would have lived here is four years. Pretty interesting to, I wish we could know.
There's a lot of.
Because there's often a difference between the values expressed by those who've lived here longer than there are those who've come more recently.
I think from the, the survey results, I think you'd be surprised that it's not. So we actually had some pretty.
Not what?
It, it's not different. So we actually had some pretty, so here's some of the data that I pulled out that wasn't in the report. As far as overarching themes for what people feel is positive now than when they first visited or moved to the area, recreation, trails and hiking, community events, sense of community, which can be in the three sections, which is the number of community organizations and volunteering opportunities, beautification that's occurred in the downtown area, community awareness, and they attribute that all to sense of community, healthy lifestyle, outdoor and natural spaces. Almost every single person in their responses said clean air, clean water, outdoor recreation. Almost every single person. Even the people who didn't like us said that. So of course, we get negative responses in our surveying, and we had a couple people who are not happy with the city of Mount Shasta, which is fine. And I shared this with Bruce, but every single one of those people in their responses said, but we live in the most beautiful natural spaces with the best natural resources and recreation in California or in the nation. So they super dislike us, but almost every single person said recreation and natural spaces. That's just what came out. You know, there's really, there wasn't a single person who said those weren't important to them. And I've read pretty much every single response. As far as negatives, almost every single person brought up downtown empty businesses as being a negative change, transient, illegal camping, high cost of living related to housing and grocery values, lack of variety in shops and restaurants. I think the most surprising thing to me is there was a, a majority of respondents said the increase in tourism is a negative for the city because it has higher traffic in the downtown area with vehicle congestion in the summer, traffic related to recreational spaces and that there's more people and it's harder to enjoy. Especially, a lot of locals said places that used to be hidden are now not, and so there are more people there, leading to its degradation, tourism shops that don't provide real resources for people who live here. And then there was a, an increase in the, it was actually a pretty substantial number of people said that vacation rentals are negative, are a negative change. So those are all related to the increase in tourism, although a lot of people did admit that tourism is essential for the economy, they think it's important, but they want to see it less as an emphasis by the city. A lot of people say what's negative now is the division of community over topics in the city, decrease in live performances and music performances, and then our solid waste programming is lacking. Those are pretty much echoed throughout all of the responses. And then as far as the definition, definition of small-town, recreation, community events, youth activities, walkable, clean, attractive, friendly, accepting, affordable, diverse, locally-owned businesses, and close to the outdoors and natural spaces. Those were, those were echoed throughout all of the survey responses. So anytime someone said small-town, I looked at the other things that they talked about, and these were that. So that, that's what people see, is our small-town currently, as well as what they'd like to see more of in the future. And they want to preserve a lot of these factors that are on page 113. So I mean, it comes down to four major areas people commented on, affordability of housing and affordability of running a business, safety, diverse economic, diverse economy and economic vitality, and natural resources. Like I said, almost every single person brought up natural resources, open space, and recreation. So, so again, you know, people were in an array of income, and we did have an array of people from different age groups, as well as visitors who took the survey, and almost all of them, it was pretty easy to put together a, a vision outline for Planning Commission to work off of. People really do actually agree a lot more than they disagree. So on page 14, at the September 18th regular Planning Commission meeting, I basically brought forward everything that I've been talking to you about, and then a list of basically, these are the different things people found important. We started with a draft and basically worked on pieces of paper, erased out words, and worked with the public who attended that. I also sent out the vision statement to our organizations that are registered with us, and I heard back from two that basically rewrote the vision, but it pretty much fits under this vision still. I believe one was forwarded to a couple of council members. But basically, everybody's going to rewrite this vision in their own frame, but if it still fits under this, I, I think that's a fairly good success. It still provides for that in this vision statement. And we got no negative comments about the vision statement, and we had Siskiyou Economic Development Council, Chamber of Commerce, Shasta Community Foundation, Siskiyou Land Trust, and even Crystal Geyser took a look at our vision and said that it looked good. So basically, what it comes down to is the proposed vision is the city of Mount Shasta is a diverse, innovative is a diverse, innovative, and walkable small-town surrounded by breathtaking natural beauty that is easily accessible from a vibrant downtown full of strong locally-owned businesses. The city takes pride in the ability of its residents to connect with each other, as well as its own capacity to support local industry and provide cutting-edge infrastructure while preserving the rich natural environment." And so to talk about how we use this, creating context from the vision, as you'll see from page 115, what I basically do, especially in the land use area, is I break it down into sections. And so I gave you the example of vibrant downtown. How do you provide for that in land use? So we talk about active commercial centers, making sure that the majority of these spaces downtown either provide residential units on the upper stories, as well as retail uses on the bottom, restaurants. What we call active means that they're providing foot traffic. And so that's kind of how we translate the vision into future land designations. We make sure those areas are being provided for. Additionally, another example is preserving rich natural environment. That means we're going through that conservation element and saying what land uses are preserving the forested areas for either timber, aesthetic enjoyment, or for hiking and trails, and make sure that we have that land use designation provided for. And then we translate that into zoning code policies, ordinances, and city policies. So again, going back to active commercial, zoning code, that would relate to that is active commercial, mixed-use residential, which has the, the shops on the bottom. Public event space would be really important for active commercial, and making sure those are all spatially oriented, close to each other. Ordinances related to it are noise control, special events, outdoor seating and gathering spaces. I know parklets have been brought up a lot, and we can associate that with active commercial planning. And so that's basically how we break that vision down into the more important pieces of the plan and why it's, it's needed to begin the process. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Very thorough. Thank you very much. So first, questions of Juliana about the vision.
I think this is fantastic, the information that you, you received from, from this. I just, I really, it's really fascinating to me, and it's very useful, I think, to us to look at. I always kind of look at a vision statement as aspirational. So, how long did it take you guys to come up with the vision statement? Was it something you worked on for months, or?
So basically, I, I took the data from the vision statement, probably took me four to eight hours to kind of, well, probably took more than that. Took me some time personally to sort through the answers, make, and, and kind of parcel out similarities. Again, it was actually pretty easy to do. People were pretty much on the same page, which doesn't happen very often, and kind of looked at the significance and the number of times people mentioned things. And then as far as Planning Commission, I think it took us like two hours. I don't even know if it was that long. Basically, we sat down and we were all on the same page with the survey respondents, and we had collected input during the scoping session about the types of questions people were asking about, topic areas people were concerned with. And it all was pretty kind of easy. People are pretty, like I said, pretty much on the same page.
Did you have folks show up at the Planning Commission meetings with suggestions about the vision, and that was incorporated in your-
Yep.
...results?
Yep, we had, I want to say maybe about eight people total, and each person, we did an exercise actually where we asked people to come up and envision what a headline for the city of Mount Shasta would be in 2045, celebrating something that we did. And so most of, most of the people came up and gave a suggestion. Some of the pieces got integrated into this and some of it didn't. I think most of it relied primarily on the survey results and just the input that we had been getting through the scoping process.
Thank you. Other, other questions? Okay, let me, let me give the public an opportunity. Those of you sitting in the audience, would you like to comment on our vision? Some of you have seen it. Some of you have not, probably.
Alan Wardney, Buena Vista Court, I'm on the Planning Commission, was part and parcel of putting this together. I'd like to be able to answer the questions also.
You have to like eat it.
I'd like to be able to be involved in the answers too, if you have any questions of me as a Planning Commissioner, so I'll, I'll be right over there.
Okay, thank you.
I like it.
You like it? Other comments?
Hi, once again, John Adamson, City of Mount Shasta. I'm with Paul. It's fascinating, the information that's in here. And I, I had a chance to look at it, and I went back a couple of mornings sitting with coffee and just reading it again and again. And it's just, it is amazing to me what was gleaned from this. Okay. In the concept of this, one of the things that I think Juliana, I, I think needs, the, the decision-makers need to understand, this is, this is a mission statement. Mission statements are always big, broad, general, happy, la di da, la di da, la di da. That might be, but you got the background here, and it's the data that's in it. It's just, again, just, it's really, really quite fascinating. Having worked on items such as this, similar to this, not like this, but similar to this in the past, and working with fourteen to eighteen people, and hoping you come up with something in three to maybe six weeks, and then I'm listening to your staff sit here and say, "Yeah, it was four to eight hours, and I think I got most of it done in about two." You know, you, you walk away, when you have a level of experience that, that vests thirty to forty years, and you say, "Man, this is cool. This is nice. This is a great vision statement, and it is extremely well-done." And I really, truly hope you laud your staff for this, I truly do. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, council comments?
The way I read this, so the city takes pride in its ability to connect with each other, and it takes pride in its own capacity to support local industry and provide cutting-edge infrastructure. So it's saying that we are, I'm sort of reading that we're self-contained as a city. I mean, is that the intention? That we're supporting, we have the capacity to support local industry and provide cutting-edge infrastructure?
Correct. And I, I think there was a lot of, the, the language that people used in a lot of the things people had talked about is kind of a do-it-yourself. A lot of people had talked about how they connected with different people through community organizations. Like I said, a big pro was a sense of community in a variety of different ways, and a lot of people talked about how they do that themselves. I think when we talk about the city taking pride in its residents' ability, I think it's the fact that the city doesn't have to force it. And I think the city, I, I think one of the problems the city of Mount Shasta has, just based on my own personal experience, is that we talk about how we're not getting things done, when in reality, we should have more pride in our capacity to do that. And I think it's going to take about twenty-five years to get staff to the point of being proud of being able to do a lot of what we do. And I, I think that's kind of part of it. I think there was discussion separating this sentence into two sentences, which is possible, but I, I think it reads decently on its own. And I think the, the notion is that we, we take pride in a lot of what we do internally, as well as our residents being able to do things.
Yeah. And then I did, sorry, I just, one more second. I just, I did read that comment right above that said possibly adding healthy, and we take pride in the way we connect. And I like the idea of connecting in healthy ways, that there's a qualifier, but I know, you know, there's going to be comments, and we can't put everything in there, but I do like the idea of reaching for health in twenty-five years, that we, that we have a healthy community. It's a good idea.
Yeah, I just, I, I really like it. I like the fact that if we are going to survive as a city, we do have to work together. We do have to support our local industry, and we have to support each other. We have to quit shopping on Amazon. We have to quit, we have to think locally if we want to be a vibrant, exciting city in the future. Otherwise, we're just going to be another place on the map. You know, we have to learn how to work with each other. And to me, this, this vision statement says most of that. So I really, really like it, and I really, I want to just go ahead with what the, the Planning Commission has put the effort into, to honor their work and, and accept this the way it's written, is how I feel.
John? Tim?
I like the vision statement. I, I do have some concerns about it. I would like to see it get tweaked a bit more. When it talks about downtown full of strong locally-owned businesses, it seems to me that's excluding one of the things that we are hoping to do is to attract people who can work from anywhere. Maybe they're working for companies in Silicon Valley, but they made a lifestyle choice to live in Mount Shasta, but they're not necessarily working for a locally-owned business. So I think the intent there is really to express that the city is strong economically, has an abundance of social, recreational, and economic opportunities for the residents. I liked, I can't remember if it was Plano or Fort Bragg that talked about education as well. This feels a bit insular to me, and I think it perhaps can be modified somewhat to be a bit broader and more inclusive. So, so those are my comments. I, I think it's a great start, and I, I think with a little more work, it could be better still.
Okay. I, I don't think that, that having a vibrant downtown excludes other things from going on. I think what, what, I think the intent of that first sentence was that we have a beautiful area accessible from a vibrant downtown, so that we're, we're so close to, to the natural environment.
It's, yes, when you talk about strong locally-owned businesses, great, but that's, I think, under-inclusive. It offers an abundance of economic opportunities.
Unfortunately, a majority of the input that received was very specific to locally-owned business. That was a priority brought up. Again, when people were asked, what do they value, or what do they want in the future to preserve, locally-owned small businesses was the priority by a majority of the commenters. And that, and I think to address your comment, when we say vibrant downtown full of strong locally-owned businesses, that's what they're prioritizing. So we're not pushing out telecommuters. One of the things people had prioritized and value is, in the downtown, they see locally-owned businesses. So rather, you know, similar to AT&amp;T, it's a locally-owned franchise, or someone's opening their small business downtown. That's what was favored over, and people specifically brought up that they didn't want big-box stores or common conventional stores.
We've already, yeah, we've already provided for that in, in, we've indicated that we don't want national franchises or fast foods east of the railroad tracks. So that excludes the, the downtown area. But if somebody wants to be able to telecommute from their home and go down to the Bay Area once a month or something like that, we're not really encouraging that type of resident in this vision statement.
I, I'd like to weigh in here. I, I'd like to support Barb's point about healthy. I don't remember where it came from, but-
It's right at the bottom.
-when we talk about, okay, the clean air, clean water, recreation, all the act, that all points to healthy, and I think it's, it's something that people move here for. So I, I'd like to see if we could find a way to put that in the vision statement, because I think it, I think it's important. Walkable, I love walkable, and it embraces some of that. I was also struck by the locally-owned business statement. I love the, the goal of having locally-owned businesses. I'm not sure how realistic it is, give, only, and this implies that we support locally-owned businesses. Well, I'm not sure how realistic it is because we have, our, our locals aren't particularly wealthy, many of them, and we're having difficulty filling those vacant storefronts. Who in the local area is going to buy Lucille's, for instance? I, I, I think, in addition to the point you made, Tim, about the telecommuters, I, I think we need to be, we need to recognize that we're interdependent, like every other community, on certain factors, and that perhaps we could reword this to say something about how we welcome strong locally-owned businesses, or we appreciate them. But to me, it's, it's, it's a bit too limiting. I, I guess I've said it.
Yeah, I, I look at this, and it says, "Support local industry and provide cutting-edge infrastructure while preserving the rich." The infrastructure implies home businesses, telecommunicating. We want them also to be part of the community. I don't see where we're excluding anybody by that. Personally, I don't see that, just because of the fact we have cutting-edge infrastructure written in here. To me implies that, you know, you can work out of your home. We have that. It's provided here. That's one of our goals. To actually spell out every single thing in a vision statement, to me, is, is very difficult. And we can sit here, you know, until the cows come home and, and talk about this, and I understand we all have our own opinions, but it's never going to be perfect for everybody, but it's, you know, I, I think it's very well-written.
Can I say something? Ashton, a member of yours, was very exclusive.
Can you talk into the mic?
Ashton was very, very, for a long time. They didn't allow any chains in their downtown, or anywhere within the city limits. And they, obviously, they've been quite successful in doing that. But I think that, I want to support what, what you said about the statement isn't exclusive. It's not saying you can't be a cha, you know, from work, you know, you're working for AT&amp;T, but you're in your, in your little office here. You know, it, it doesn't say that we can't do that. It's not, it's not saying that, you know, that's not allowed. It's just that primarily, we're trying to support the development of local industry, local businesses.
As long as it doesn't become exclusive, I'm comfortable with it. And I, and I, yeah, I, I just, I wanted to express my initial nag I had there.
Well, it does go along with what Tim said, like in the other parts of the general plan. We, we don't want big boxes. We don't want-
Right, right, right. But there's a difference-
It goes along with that.
Sure. But there's a difference, I mean, what if somebody from, what's local? What if somebody from Reading wants to develop a gift shop in downtown, or, you know-
No way, they can't come here.
You know what I'm saying, though? I just, I just wanted to be clear, and perhaps some wordsmithing would help it be a little clearer, and so it's not exclus, exclusionary.
The South, South Los Angeles uses the, the phrase that I like, promotes economic viability for everyone.
One of the suggestions is just remove the word "full" from vibrant downtown and write the word "with." And then if you want to add the word "healthy," just add it to the list of diverse, healthy, innovative, and walkable.
Right.
And what about the, the phrase, or something tantamount to it, "And promotes economic viability for everyone?"
Where? Where did you put that? That's getting too long. Where, where are you?
I, I think, again, you have to take into account, this is going to be paired with the scoping document, and one of the things the state of California one requires of us, and we aspire to, is environmental justice piece, which is looking at all of those different income levels and prioritizing those, prioritizing different disadvantaged communities. So, you know, again, we also, again, have the phrase, "We pride ourselves in our own capacity to support local industry." And again, the word "industry," everyone's thought of smelting, heavy industry, manufacturing. But local industry, one of the things that was brought up in Planning Commission, is the number of silent industries that we have in the city that doesn't have a permanent location. And that's one of the things we would look at in the economic development element, is some of our local industry is consultants. So again, going back to the whole telecommuting thing, if we do happen to have a lot of telecommuters, that can be part of supporting local industry. And again, similar to what Councilmember Ingstrom was talking about, was, you know, providing the cutting-edge infrastructure, or mapping and identifying our broadband and communication infrastructure, and gearing policies and goals around improving those things, or taking those things to a level that the residents want, or community wants in general. So again, partnering this with the scope, you know, we are going to be providing certain things for that. Like I said, you're going to see a lot of consultants come out of the business assessment, and they don't have a permanent place. They are working from their home. So I think it is providing for it. I think switching the word "full" with "with" and adding the word "healthy" to the list above doesn't change the intent of the vision that's already been created.
If I may?
Yes.
And the word diversity could speak to economic diversity. In my mind, it could cover that.
A good place for "healthy" would be, the city of Mount Shasta is a healthy, comma, diverse. And then, from the third line, vibrant downtown, full of strong, locally-owned businesses, and economic and social opportunities.
So, Tim, I want to, what I don't want to do is wordsmith as a council. So let's just, what I'm hearing basically is agreement around what we're reading here. I don't, I haven't heard anybody say, "No, I disagree with what you're saying." What I hear us talking about is whether there are better words to describe it. And I don't think we're in a good position to wordsmith this thing. I think that we have shared our concerns. Okay, Barbara has another one. But I'd like to leave it to the planning commissioners to hear what we've said and integrate it, add a word here or there, perhaps, and then just leave it at that. And then let our policymaking role kick in when we get to the actual guts of the elements. Barbara?
Yeah. I guess I'm wondering, is it the residents that are healthy, or is it the town that's healthy? So I guess I'm wondering where to put that. Is it the residents that are diverse? Or is it the town that's diverse? Now, a small town is walkable, yes, but what's innovative? Is the residents that are innovative, or is the town innovative?
Yeah, we thought, I thought about that, too. If you can find a better way to say it, then fine. I think it gets the point across.
The word "healthy," to me, connotes economically healthy, physically healthy, socially healthy.
Well-being, an overall well-being. I also want to point out that I really like the part in here about the connectivity, people connecting with each other. I think that is definitely a part of what I experienced in this town, as part of a small-town feel. And I'd like, I just want to compliment you on that, on that aspect of it, too. So can we, can we feel good about the conversation we've had, the feedback we've given? I know Kathy took notes of it, and I think Juliana did, too. Thank you, Kathy, of our comments, and trust them to work in whatever you can do to respond to the comment?
So you're, what I hear you doing is making a motion to send this back to the Planning Commission for some wordsmithing and bring it back to council?
I wasn't going to ask them to bring it back to council. I frankly was going to ask them just to do, to hear what we've said, and trust them to make the best of it. I haven't heard a lot of disagreement in us, and so I was going to trust them to do the best they can with the comments they've heard. Because otherwise, it's an endless process. And some of us are more word-oriented and more specific about what we like to see than others. Or we could move it to a motion now, and it looks to me like we have enough votes to have this thing pass, as is.
Especially if she's looking to use this vision statement for grant writing immediately. I mean, you know, otherwise, yeah.
I'd like to just make a motion for us to accept it the way it's written. I like it. I mean, we can pick it apart, put everything we want in there. I just think it, to me, it resonates. It says what I, I think it's, really covers just about everything. I don't think it's exclusive. I think it's inclusive, the way it's written. So I want to make, I want to move to accept this the way it's written.
Can I ask you for an amendment? To add "healthy," to do what they suggested, which was to add "healthy," and to put the word "full" and, or the word "with"?
The "healthy" is a healthy environment, or is it that the people are healthy? So that needs to be figured out, right? And I think you mean it's a healthy environment. We have really good air here, by all standards, all measurements. It's very clean. And we have usually good water to drink, and so on and so forth. So if we're going to make the amendment, where do we want to put it?
They can figure that out.
Yeah, I don't want to make the amendment. I want to, my motion is to accept it the way it's written.
Okay, is there a second?
We can vote from there.
Well, she did offer to replace "full" with-
No.
She doesn't, he doesn't want to do the-
My amendment is to leave it as it is.
Okay.
Accept it the way it's written without anything-
There is no amendment. You're moving to pass that.
Is there a second to pause?
I'll second. I will second.
All the, any comments? All those in favor?
I, I thought there was going to be an opportunity for discussion on the motion.
I asked for conversation.
So discussion on the motion? Again, I think this is a, I think Juliana did a very good job of coming up with an excellent first draft. I think it would not take long to modify this and bring it into full bloom excellence. So I will, I'll be voting against the motion for that reason.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, we pass four to one with Tim opposed. Thank you very much. And thanks, Alan, for joining us tonight. And also, if you'd pass on my, thanks to Belinda for having written the email. Where are we?
I just want to talk about item number 12, which is council reports attendance at outside meetings. We attended Lola, and I guess Catherine would like a writ report-
I saw that.
Yeah, so you're okay with it for the next time?
I don't know. I'm going to get back to you and ask you to contribute to it.
Okay, sure, sure.
Okay, future agenda items. Anything to add? I have a typo suggestion. I think the next meeting is going to be on the 12th.
It's the 13th.
It's the 13th?
Does the 12th a holiday?
Correct.
The 11, the 12th is a holiday, so normally, we roll it over the next day.
All righty then. Okay, I'm glad that-
I would like to add vacant building ordinance, unless that's incorporated into the nuisance ordinance.
What was that?
Vacant building.
Vacant building ordinance, unless that becomes part of the nuisance ordinance.
We are presently looking at, as you know, the council knows, at the nuisance ordinance, and amending, expanding the nuisance ordinance. And one of the issues we're looking at is the vacant building. Now, whether that will be incorporated into that ordinance, or will come back to as a standalone ordinance, has not been decided.
And I'm suggesting that if it's going to be a standalone ordinance, we consider the two of them together. I think that would be ideal.
Okay, so there've been two council members suggest that we add the vacant property ordinance to the agenda?
If, if it's not, yeah, if-
If it's not included in the nuisance amendment, ordinance. Understood? Okay?
So it'll be a one, it'll be a one or a pair.
There you go.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to see us revisit the public input for the building, the library building design at the 30 percent, since we're at 30 percent drawings and there's some controversy. I'd like the, if the staff could look at what it would cost us to put in a public input element, or is the staff saying that there's enough visibility on the website?
Let us, let us finish working through the concerns of LTAC, Friends of the Library, and your librarian, and the issues on the building. See where we stand at that point, and we'll bring a progress report back. And if we deem that we need more public participation, or that that's a possibility, then we would include that analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Thrive Hive Marketing Plan?
Yes.
Can we expect an update to be on an agenda sometime in the near future?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Anything to say right now? Is it 60 days, 90 days?
Hopefully, we should have that in November.
Okay, but you don't want to, you don't want to commit to putting it on the agenda yet?
No.
Okay.
I'm sure you'll help us remember.
It's-
Anything else? Okay.
Well, yeah, there was the development, the consultant that was going to look at the EIFD. How's that going, and will that make it to the agenda sometime? EIFD feasibility plan?
Well, that proposal for the grant is basically completed. We had to do some restructuring, because the Economic Development Administration had limits on how much per category, in terms of data that you could put in. So we had to re-scope it down a little bit to fit their parameters, but that's basically completed. We have a little new data to put into it, and it's out. So that will not be coming back to the council. You approved it. It's going straight to EDA.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. We're adjourned.